Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call to order the Hanson Planning Board meeting here at the Town of Hanson, 542 Liberty Street for March 13th, 2023. The time is 6:30 PM. Call to order for our meeting. We have a full board as well as our town planner that's present. First item of business on our agenda this evening is our minutes. Prior to doing that, I want to make sure that I announce to all the board members and for those that are present that according to Article 2-2 of the Town of Hanson Boards, Committees, and Commissions adopted in May of 2022, Section 1, all Town of Hanson Boards, Committees, and Commissions elected or and appointed shall video or audio record all meetings, which recordings shall be posted to the Town's website and/or the Women Hanson Cable Access Television website unless protected under executive session. So tonight we are being audio recorded and that will be released out to either or of those mediums. Is there a motion?
Motion to pass over the minutes of?
The motion is going to go out of agenda. A motion to go out of agenda?
Yes.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Ellis to take the agenda out of order.
Certainly.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Cohen to take the agenda out of order for just the minutes section. We will tack that on to the end. On the end, is there any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are putting the minutes to the end. Next item of business, we have a public hearing at 6:30 PM. Hearing continuation from our previous meeting, Meadow Brook Farms Residential Subdivision, formerly Fern Hill Estates, Zero County Road, Assessors MAP 74, Block 0 Lot 7 and 8. Applicant Ellis Builder and Development Plan prepared by Morse Engineering Company. And just for the record, we did have a disclosure at the last hearing by our vice chair, Mr. Ellis, in regards to having no affiliation with the applicant Ellis Builders. So we'll continue that as a runner for all of our four meetings. You're welcome. Tom Planner.
At the last hearing, we were trying to figure out if this was to move forward as a modification or a new filing. I had reached out to Town Council. He thought it was, he considered it a new filing. We gave the applicants the ability to seek their own counsel, which they did. There was a letter repaired by a Mr.
Jeffrey Delisi.
Jeffrey Delisi from Owen Burger, Delisi and Harris, LOP. That letter was written March 10, 2023. I received it today via email. I can read the letters, roughly two pages, or I can give you a synopsis of what it says. They feel that the plan is a modification and not a new filing. They presented evidence to such. The letter was sent to Jay Talaman of the Town Council of Hanson. Mr. Talaman responded an email this afternoon and he agreed with Attorney Delisi's opinion. Therefore, our Town Council is stating that this project should move forward as a modification or can move forward as a modification under the subdivision control part. Even though the my lives were not recorded, it doesn't prevent the applicant from proceeding under the subdivision control section E1X with the, sorry, E1W, I believe it's broken modification.
Any questions from the board from Tom Planner in regards to the proceedings that happened between Applicants' Council and Tom of Hanson Council?
And I can, and I'll make this letter.
Nope.
I'll make this letter public to anyone that requests to read it, how to even file it with the next minutes for the Town Clerk's office.
Wonderful.
So therefore, if Mr. Greg Morse, right, is here this evening, if he's ready to proceed and wants to present the project to the planning board and they wish to hear it, then we can move forward and begin the process. Prior to that, though, I, we have, I have reached out for peer review. So there are in your packets, Item 3, which is three proposals from three different companies, one being GZA, second being Verdantis, third being Allen &amp; Majors, and fourth, you'll see is an email from Environmental Partners, the declines on the project. They're currently, through their workload, they do not have the time to review this project. So you have three choices. Allen &amp; Majors, the Conservation Commission. I was notified by Dr. Gallagher that the commission has on their own retained Allen &amp; Majors to review this project for the Conservation Act. It would probably be, it wouldn't be bad for it to have two separate companies looking at it just for the sake of becoming the same thing if they're going to do it differently. It's just a more set of eyes.
Does the board want to open the floor to Mr. Morse? Do you want to discuss the applicants to the Tom Planner in regards to peer review first? So the willing board.
We need a peer review either way.
Sure. So if you're looking at item, thanks for coming up, looking at Item 3, you're going to have your submissions from GZA, Verdantis, Allen &amp; Majors, and EP decline. So we have four applicants total, one declining in regards to the procurement. Allen &amp; Majors, as the Top Planner stated, was chosen by CONCON to peer review.
On behalf of the CONCON Commission.
Now, is this to go through the whole project?
Um, the GZA came in cheaper than Verdantis. The applicants put up $10,000. Verdantis came in just under $10,000 and GZA came in at, let me see, $6700. So it's one of those things where obviously they're both good companies. If you go with GZA, there's a little more money in the budget for additional, any additional review. Where Verdantis didn't quite leave that in the budget. So you wind up having to seek additional funds from the applicant if there's significant changes.
So GZA is $6750?
Yes, GZA came in at $6750.
And the other one's $9,000?
$9,950.
Uh, they, what I ask them to do is to review this project based on subdivision control also. You know, is it, is it under control as far as the modifications as, is any unit being proposed conforming to the regulations that apply, subdivision, zoning, et cetera. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Ellis, yes. However, Verdantis came in at, Verdantis came in at $9950. Verdantis is doing other work for the Town of Hanson. So we do have familiarity with them or GZA, but GZA came recommended.
And their schedule, their per hour schedule is based off of procurement, prevailing wage?
No, by instinct, we just, we, the, we engage with them with the proposal and they, they do it for the amount of money that's listed.
Is there any discussion on, in either of them, like, you know, Tony, in regards to boots on the ground review?
When you say boots on the ground?
Yeah, I see that they had, they said attendance at a planning board meeting. So Task 2, attendance for GZA, it says Task 2, attendance at a planning board meeting. GZA will prepare for and attend one meeting, public hearing?
Yes.
To present our review of the summary report?
Yes.
So this is just in regards to the modifications, correct?
Yes.
So this is, this is $6750 in regards to review of what's being presented or submitted now?
Correct.
Okay. So there'll be further engagement if this project was to proceed, if there's further potential?
Correct. Obviously, this will go to the peer reviewer and usually the way, to ensure the board's familiar, usually the way it works is the peer reviewer will come back with their punch list?
Yeah.
And then they'll, they'll be presented to the applicant and the applicant's engineer and then, you know, they'll sort of going to work through, get that punch list down to the point where it meets the technical standards as required.
So the Verdantis, they're going to, opposed to come to the meeting, you're going to do a virtual?
Correct.
They have put some, I mean, they have put some, that's really, really.
They do have a site visit.
I think, I think they have.
It's in the wording, I guess.
Yeah.
Page 2, Verdantis Propose Scope of Work. They have a, they do have a task on site visit.
Yeah, so if we go through, if we look at Verdantis, you know, your scope of work. So once the site visit, choose coordinates with the town, set up a virtual meeting with the Town Planner, if appropriate, Conservation Agent to continually update information and context regarding the project. Task 3, document and review and find its letter. Task 4, public hearing, attend a virtual public hearing to present. And Task 5, supplemental review. So yes, maybe to review additional, it'll go beyond that $9950. You know, GZA says, you know, they will, let's see, first submit a, to the board, a review summary report presenting the findings from our review of the documents that were provided. So they'll get, what they've been provided with were plans, drainage reports, everything that was submitted by the applicant was sent to both companies so they could get an idea of what they need to review. And I've had conversations with both representatives from both companies.
Is there anything, Tony, that jumped off the page for any of the applicants besides cost differences? Is there anything that really jumped off the page?
No, again, they're both, they're both well-known companies, they're both reputable companies.
Right.
Again, if anyone had, let's say, a slight advantage, it might be Verdantis because they have, they are doing work with the town. They're going to be doing the, the work on the design of the pedestrian improvements down on Main Street and also they're going, they provide a proposal for the board block designed on Main Street, which is, for money is earmarked by the state, so.
And who is that? Which one?
Verdantis.
Pardon?
Verdantis, that's the second one, isn't it? Number two?
It's about a big difference.
Well, the other one is the supplement. They added a supplemental. So if you take the supplemental out, it, it's $8900.
Yeah, so they're both putting in money for supplemental.
Supplemental, yeah, yeah. And then Allen &amp; Majors was chosen by CONCON?
Yes, so Conservation retained them to begin the process. Looking at their proposal, it was pretty much based on reviewing the conservation stuff versus the whole project.
I see that.
So I think they'd be more, your choice, their proposal's more focused, let's say, on the Wilderness Protection Act and drainage versus drainage subdivision control zoning.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, their scope is up, is all about, is all about drainage and that's opposed to the whole. Any further questions from the board?
So just to clarify, we're really choosing between CZA or Verdantis?
Sounds like it. Yeah, it sounds like it.
Does that Town Planner have any preference?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have any, do you have any preference, Tony?
I'm a little more familiar with Verdantis. I've done, when I, when I say familiar with what they're working on at the Town, I've had more interaction with that company and Jeff Plant, who I spoke to.
You felt comfortable with him?
Yeah, Jeff's, you know, he's a registered professional engineer out of Massachusetts, so.
That's Verdantis?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Verdantis.
Mr. Kimber puts a motion on the floor in regards to the planning board selecting Verdantis for the peer review.
Okay.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Ellis. Any discussion in regards to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we will proceed with the selection of Verdantis. Is there a quote, is there a quote number on that, Tony, or a project number?
For Verdant?
I don't, I don't see anything that's like a.
I don't believe so. I think that will, once they get the, once we sign it, then they'll probably assign it to us.
So that would be for Verdantis, for proposed peer review, scope of work, and cost estimate, Meadow Brook Farms subdivision off County Street, Hanson, Mass., as they titled it in their submission.
So the proposal dated March 10, 2023.
Right, on record of March 10, 2023. Perfect. All right, so Item 3, we can set aside now. 3A, 3B, 3C.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions from the board in regards to peer review? I'd like to open it up to Mr. Morse. Correct?
Thank you.
Mr. Morse?
Thank you.
State your name, please, add, state your name for the record.
Yes, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering.
Thank you.
So as was read into the record earlier, this is an application for a definitive subdivision plan. This project was originally approved by this board back in June of 2021. As we moved forward with Conservation Commission after the planning board's approval, the project was ultimately denied by Conservation Commission largely with respect to issues or questions regarding the drainage design that we had. The board back in 2021, the planning board, had retained Environmental Partners that did a peer review of the drainage and concurred with the layout. Conservation did not concur. We've resubmitted this plan. We've submitted the full package, the full application. We've reduced the scope of the project. It was originally approved as a 10-watt layout. We're coming back with nine watts with this layout. The roadway is generally the same. This is a two cul-de-sac roadway. Each of those roads measuring 744 feet for the primary road, the second road being 463 feet. This property is 52 acres in size. 21 acres of it is considered upland land area. The lots are all located in the Residence AA and the agricultural residential zoning districts, requiring a minimum of 40,000 square feet of lot size. All of these lots are significantly larger than 40,000 square feet in size. Since the last meeting, we've been to the Conservation Commission. They've opened their public hearing. They've retained two consultants on their side. They've retained five wetlands to go out and perform a wetland review of the wetland line. They've also, as stated, hired Allen &amp; Major to do a review of the stormwater. We don't have results yet from either one of those in any sort of formal submittal. So tonight, we were really hoping to move forward. I'm glad to hear that the board, you know, has selected a peer reviewer. I'm not expect, I wasn't expecting to get into nitty-gritty nuts and bolts of this, but I do expect to move forward with the peer review and look forward to the results. I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. We have received to the Tom Planner's office, we have received an address letter that I would like to have a moment to read into the record. The record is the emails from Robert Scott at 119 Home Street in Hanson, and it reads as, "Hi, Tony. I would appreciate it if you would forward to Joe Campbell, Chair, and Phil Clements, Chair, the following additional concerns I have regarding the selection of a peer reviewer and other issues pertaining to the Zero County Road project to be read into the record as your respective meetings on 313 and 315. I understand that there was some discussion about who to hire as peer reviewer that both the Planning Board and Hanson Conservation Commission could use together. I would oppose the use of Environmental Partners and Geoscience as peer reviewers due to the fact that both companies were used by the developer on the previous Fern Hill Estates project, DEP file number SE175-0730, which was denied by the Department of Environmental Protections and Hanson Conservation Commission. This would remove any bias towards the development and towards, and the Town of Hanson. If the project is approved, the new detention basins will need to be required to hold all the stormwater runoff as well as the additional, over a million gallons of water from daily water usage of the proposed nine houses. I am submitting pictures on separate pages that were taken on July 2021." Tom Planner, do you have this printed and on file?
I do have it.
Thank you. "And on November 2021, that reflect the continuous flow of water running from the west end of the project area, parentheses, where the detention ponds are proposed to be located, end parentheses. This continuous flow runs under Home Street, parentheses, located near the wetlands property northerly of 119 Home Street, end parentheses, through a broken pipe to the other side of Home Street. This would affect the wetlands on both sides of Home Street as well as several local agricultural businesses. Consideration should also be given to the, excuse me, consideration should also be given to contact in the Taunton River and Watershed Council to see if the project would have any negative effect on the watershed. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Robert Scott, 119 Home Street, Hanson. Thank you for your submission, Mr. Scott." That will be entered into the record, Item 3E on your, in your packets.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, Tom Planner.
There are additional correspondence. I'd like to read into the file.
Please.
These are all emails. The first one is going to be dated February 20th from Marion Scott, 119 Home Street. Please forward props to this email to all members of the planning board. I am away for the winter and would like this letter of concern to be read on my behalf at the meeting of the planning board currently scheduled for February 27. This wasn't read earlier because at that particular point in time, we weren't sure which direction this was going to go in. I feel the project at Zero County Road in Hanson needs to be researched as a whole new project, not a revision of the former Zero County Road project. The state has denied the old project, file number SE1750730, citing many of the same concerns that the Abudis and residents of Hanson have voiced in the past. In concert, in conversation with Catty Harper, the DEP-appointed reviewer of this project, I was told the state has assigned a new file number to this project as the old project was previously denied. Is that true, Mr.?
Yes, we've had a new filing with the state. This plan calls for detention basins to contain the water from stormwater runoff. No place is there any mention of where that, where the water from daily use of nine houses is going to go. This is approximately 1 million gallons of additional water that will be put into the ground by way of septic systems. There is bedrock and other impervious soil under this site, as is shown on the GIS and geological maps of the area. This substance is impervious. I am curious if this new project of nine, four nine houses still requires the land to be built up four to seven feet above the current ground. This would make water from the everyday usage that is not available for the impervious soil runoff to surrounding areas, that being the neighboring properties. These properties are already dealing with flooding issues as demonstrated in many photos submitted in the past to the state reviewer. In, in the state denial to the file number SE1750730, the state has voiced the same concerns as the Abudis and the people of Hanson. I would like to quote from this denial, quote, "The department has determined the project site to be significant to the following statutory interests of the Wilderness Protection Act: groundwater supply, prevention of pollution, flood control, storm damage prevention, and wildlife habitat," end quote. I myself also have major concerns about the effects of this much additional water, possibly contaminated with fertilizer pesticides and household waste being added to the Taunton River watershed which this property is located in. As a condition of approval, should the board choose that route, I would like to suggest you require the developer to flow a bond adequate to protect the Abudis, neighbors, and residents of Hanson if and when contamination of private wells, failed septic systems, flooding of basements of property should occur. In conclusion and in light of the prior inaccurate representations concerning this property, I urge you to proceed with the utmost caution and complete analysis before making any decisions regarding this project. Sincerely, Marion Scott, 119 Home Street." Again, that was dated Monday, February 20, 2023.
Tony, before you proceed, was, was council, was, when council weighed in in regards to the procedure continuing as a modification, were they aware of the new DEP filing number? And would that change any of their opinion, do you believe?
Counsel, they were not aware.
Okay.
Uh, the second letter is from.
Do you think that, do you think it would have any effect on, 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 is that, they were weighing opinion on procedural?
This was strictly for subdivision. So that file number is irrelevant.
Okay, thank you.
That's still Wilderness Protection. This is from Mr. Robert Scott. This is dated February, via email, Thursday, February 23. Please forward to Joe Campbell, Chair, of the planning board. Hi, Joe. I would appreciate if you could read the following concerns into the record on the 2/27/2023 board meeting. Since there have been substantial changes to this project over the past several months, I believe that this project should be handled as a new project and not as a revised project for the following reasons. One, the applicant has reduced the number of homes from 10 to 9. Two, the three or four infiltration basins as originally proposed have been completely eliminated and replaced by two large detention basins. Three, the hydroanalysis method used, bombing analysis, when the design was for the infiltration base, for an infiltration basin. Shouldn't a new analysis be made to determine if this new proposal is suitable for this area? This new analysis needs to be subject to an in-depth town witness review by a qualified engineer. Four, the Department of Environmental Protection has denied the previous project and has assigned a new file number to the current project. Five, the applicant has not only changed the name of the project from Fern Hill Estates to Meadow Brook Farms, but has also changed the names to the assigned roads. In closing, I believe the above reasons are major changes which would warrant a completely new in-depth review of this project so that nothing is glossed over. This is in light of the previous project where a lot of questionable data and misinformation was presented. Robert Scott. So also, I have a letter here from the Dr. Gallagher, the Conservation Agent for the Town of Hanson, and a letter received by the planning board dated February 27, 2023. Planning Board Members, Town of Hanson, Mass. Subject: Comments on the submittal of the definitive subdivision identified as Meadow Brook Farm. Sirs, the Conservation Commission has the responsibility to administer and enforce the Wilderness Protection Act and its implementing regulations. Included in these regulations are the requirements that a subdivision meet the stormwater management standards as set forth in 310 CMR 10.056K through Q. The comments provided here are offered in view of these requirements. The CONCON is concerned that the planning board approved a previous submittal for the parcels involved in this submittal, Assessors MAP 74, Lot 7 and 8. And as part of that approval, the board waived the planning board regulation that requires stormwater basins to be on their own lots, 6I. Since the stormwater basins for the subject project will eventually become part of Hanson's MS4, this waiver is not in the interest of the Town or the homeowners who reside in this subdivision. Who among you wishes to have an infiltration slash detention basin in his backyard? Land that you own but cannot use. Who among you would want the highway department to send workers onto your property to do the required maintenance work each year? The townspeople are better served if the operations and maintenance plan that the highway department influences carried out on town-owned property. The CONCON recommends that you do not approve the waiver for this subdivision or any future project. Also, the approved previous submittal included the requirement that a homeowners association comprised of the homeowners of the subdivision be required to assume responsibility for the maintenance of the streets and infrastructure, including the stormwater management system, after the developer had departed and before the town takes ownership slash responsibility. Who among you would like to be an HOA member with this responsibility and cost, knowing you pay your taxes to the town? There is a simple, there is simple, I'm sorry, there is ample evidence from other subdivisions in Hanson that homeowners do not take on this responsibility. From a conservationist's standpoint, the stormwater management system will not be maintained. With this neglect, we'll have the well and resources of the town. The CONCON recommends. The ConCon recommends that you hold the developer responsible until the town accepts the streets and infrastructure. Further, you should require that the developer provide a significantly higher share rate to ensure this maintenance is performed. The Conservation Commission is currently reviewing this submittal, including compliance with stormwater management requirements. The commission intends to engage a peer reviewer under chapter 44, section 53G. Respectfully, Fred Schellinger, Town of Hanson.
You may take a drink. I have two others.
Sure.
Uh, we could actually...I can...I can comment. I would like to comment in regards to the name changes of the roads. That is something that back at that point, the Town of Hanson requested of...of the proposed project, uh, because it was a potential confusion with other areas of town. So that was an ask that came from the Planning Board.
Okay, this...this is a letter dated, um, February 15th, 2023. This was given to us by Mr. O'Sullivan at the last meeting. This is addressed, though, to Chairman Philip Clemens of the Hanson Conservation Commission. I don't know if the board would like to listen here with the ask to say.
Please.
Dear Chair Clemens and Board of Commissioners, I am ready to express my opposition to the proposed housing development on County Road in Hanson, which may also impact residents on West Washington Street, Holm Street, and Raynac Farms. It has been brought to my attention by neighbors and activists that the development may be caused for serious environmental and residential flooding concern in the surrounding area. Areas of Hanson, like many towns in the region, suffer from serious chronic flooding because of their local water conditions and geology. The site of the proposed development is surrounded by wetlands primed for such flooding, which can cause flooding and major property damage to abutting homeowners. The designs for this project may exacerbate this problem for abutters as the volume of water...as the volume of runoff will increase due to the denodation of trees and installation of hard, impermeable surfaces. The construction of the project threatens to raise the height of the lands, thus in... parentheses, thus increasing the runoff velocity of groundwater to surrounding properties and entrances. The town is generally supportive of new housing developments to house more residents and grow the economy of the town. However, given the overwhelming concern and negative sentiment from the residents and abutters citing legitimate concerns regarding stormwater runoff, I feel it is uncomfortable to continue with the following as described at this time. It appears that...at this time, it appears that the responsibility built...the responsibility building at this site is unfeasible and irresponsible. Thank you for your consideration, Michael E. Brady, State Senator, Second Plumb of the Northridge District. And if you'll bear with me, I have two other emails to read. Actually, I think there's one. Yep, it's one because you heard the other. Okay, so this is the last email. Received...received, uh, this is from... This is Scott. Marion, this is from Marion Scott, 119 Holm Street, Hanson, received via email Sunday, March 12th, 2023 at 1:02 PM. I am writing to you as a concerned resident of Hanson and abutter of the proposed Zero County Road project. The state of Massachusetts DEP as well as the Hanson Conservation Commission has denied a prior attempt to develop this land citing various concerns in an effort to protect the well and the current residents in Hanson. Their denial was based on an in-depth review of the project by the Town of Hanson-appointed Chassia Consulting Services LLC and also a review of all previously submitted documentation of this project by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Management. Please see submitted pages two and three of plans and documents that were cited in their denial. These documents cited by the state need to be addressed as to how these issues will be affected by this new proposal. This coupled with the fact that...this coupled with the fact the GIS map lists this area as consisting of an abundance of ledge and lacustrine soil, which is known for its poor drainage properties, is a red flag. The poor drainage in this area of Hanson has historically caused much flooding to neighboring homes. Some residents have had to make major repairs due to flooded basements, some have had to replace septic systems, and one nearby resident had to raise his house to avoid flooding. Currently, water not absorbed by the grounds run across Holm Street and continue to do this several days after heavy rainfall. See attached pa...uh, page four. She did attach some photos, which I didn't receive. Recently, the Hanson Highway Department had to bring out heavy equipment to scrape the ice off the pavement on the curb in front of 119 Holm Street. This ice collected as a result of water not being absorbed by the impervious soil beneath the ground that drained onto the road and froze. This section of Holm Street has a history of being the site of many traffic accidents over the years due to the curb and the road. This coupled with ice makes it even...an even bigger hazard. I am very concerned as to the ramifications of building up several acres of land four to seven feet and how it will influence stormwater management. The building of nine new houses will ultimately add well over a million gallons of water a year to an area that is already overburdened. If the detention basins do not drain properly, the results could be disastrous to the well and residents surrounding this development. Please see attachment page five showing photos, which she did attach, of how the water in this area remains on top of the ground days after a rainfall as the water is not able to penetrate the existing soil. This concern was also pointed out in the refusal by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in a prior request to develop this property. The Hanson Highway Department needs to be consulted concerning this project as currently there is a broken pipe which carries the water from the wetlands under Holm Street to the opposite side where the...where there are agricultural businesses that are already struggling from the effects of excess water. These local businesses will be devastated with the addition of this much additional water. This affects the drainage on a private property on both sides of the street. This pipe is in no condition to handle a million gallon of water a year. This ultimately drains into the Taunton River watershed, which should not be receiving water contaminated with household runoff fertilizer pesticides from several new houses. I do not personally rely on a private well for my household water, but I am very concerned for the abutters that do. Water draining from the roads and land that has been filled four to seven feet could very easily contain contaminants or fertilizers inside control of road salt, et cetera, that could see that these existing wells endanger the people relying on these for their water. This concern was also voiced by the Mass DEP in their denial of this project. Studies need to be done to see if the proposed detention ponds will be large enough to hold the output of an additional over a million gallons of water from nine houses as well as the stormwater runoff from the...all the additional impervious surfaces from roads, driveways, swimming pools, et cetera. In your review, I would appreciate if...if you would include these concerns into your investigation. I question the ground below can withstand as much...such a major change to the ground above. How can an elevation change of four to seven feet of soil not cause water runoff and flooding to neighboring property, roads and wetlands? If this project is to go forward, the residents of Hanson and abutters need a guarantee from the developer that the longtime residents and taxpayers of Hanson will not be adversely affected by this project. One company's gain should not be the demise of existing businesses and destruction of family estates. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this matter. Marion Scott, 119 Holm Street, Hanson. And that's all I have for correspondence at this point. I don't know if Mr. Morse, listening to any of that, would like to make any comments or if you would want to hold those comments until...
Sure, real...real briefly here. I think what your peer reviewer is gonna tell you is that the requirement is that we don't increase the stormwater off of the site, not that we can't discharge stormwater off the site. That's how we've designed this. You'll see that there are two extremely large detention basins at the proposed intersection. That's made to make up the difference in the runoff when you take the forested area and you convert it into lawn and to the roadway surfaces themselves. It's all captured through a series of catch basins and swales and directed to those two detention basins. Regarding the fill on the site, the amount of fill on the site is dictated by the groundwater table and dictated by the drainage, certainly. We conducted over 40 test pits at this site. We had the Board of Health witness out on the site for soil testing as well on all of the lots. We have this designed essentially as what we see as the minimal amount of fill necessary to comply with the requirements. I hear a lot of discussion about existing problems on Holm Street, ice on the road, a broken pipe under the street. Those are existing problems that are out there. Those should be dealt with, certainly. This property here didn't cause those problems. The other thing that, you know, comes up that I...I heard in Dr. Schellinger's letter is regard to the drainage basins located within easements or on their own private lots. That was a big discussion that we had when this project was proposed in 2021, whether detention basins should be on their own private parcels or should they be in an easement on one of the lots. We had a lot of discussion about that, and the consensus of the board was that they should be on easements on the private properties, that they would be better maintained if they were on the private lots...or sorry, on private easements on the lots. We can do this either way. We can put them on private parcels if that's the board's preference. How it was approved previously, again, after lots of discussion, was easements were the preferred method. We have it laid out so we can do it either way. You know, if we get guidance from you, we can adjust accordingly. But no, I look forward to the...the peer review on this. Back to you.
Mr. Morse, is there any intent at the end of the project to propose that the roads become public ways?
I mean, at some point in time, they could be, you know, taken by the town. So this was designed so a homeowners' association would take care of the maintenance. You know, that homeowners' association could always petition the town for...for taking.
But there's no proposal that as soon as...if it was to go forward, as soon as completion, that would be submitted? You said that you do have documentation that you could present that would show, uh, parcels, uh, show the detention on its own parcel or on its own lot? Yeah, parcel, sorry, on its own parcel.
Yes, it would be on its own parcel. We could certainly turn those easement lines into parcel lines and just make them on their own parcel. I think the discussions that we had previously was that if they were on a parcel, they would now potentially go, uh, you know, without someone paying taxes on them. A homeowner, you know, physically wouldn't own that, so they wouldn't have any real interest in maintaining it as opposed to if it's on their property, it's advantageous for them to maintain it. It's a liability if it's on their property, so it almost forces the homeowner to take care of it or make sure that it's taken care of.
Would the project not change from a nine to an eight because of lot one not having the proper square footage?
It...it would not change, uh, down in number of lots. You know, there's significant area out here on all of these lots. You know, we could revise accordingly and take out those easement areas.
It would be just a redesign of the detention.
It would be changing those easements to...to parcel lines essentially. The physical drainage basins, I don't think, would change, um, at all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Town Planner.
Obviously, this project was before my tenure, so I guess my question becomes, is the intention of this board to want this road to eventually become a public way?
Yes.
If that...and if that is the case, then I think that those...that drainage basin would be better served to be on its own lot to allow for the town access at any time to do any maintenance. If it's the intention of the board to have this as a private way, uh, type of project where the road will never be accepted by the town, then an easement would work, but that HOA should be clearly understood as part of their maintenance and landscaping that those basins must be being taken.
I'd have to say, from my own perspective, with the intent of what's been going on with town and the private ways to public being a very flavor of the day event that's happening, uh, I...I certainly would say that it should be the intent eventually to choose to have it as a public way.
Mr. Chair, should we motion a vote on that?
On the...
On the, uh, the idea that this would be public or private?
I...I don't...I don't think we need to at this point. I know right now, yeah. I'd be more interested to find out...to find out exactly what that's gonna look like, the layout of that, uh, or if the board would like to see the same, but seeing that the lot line's changing to see if they're, you know, coming back. If you have that at the ready, uh, definitely to see that.
That would be the difference.
Right. Town Planner, can you pull up that lot one?
Right now, you see that there's, uh, Mr. Morse is correcting, but there's a...Greg, is this a limit of a fence of some kind?
There is. That's a fence, um, along the limit of the easement there.
So, you know, if you make it a public way, I would recommend...and you asking my opinion, my recommendation should be to put that entire drainage basin on its own lot. Surround...have it on its own lot.
On its own...on its own lot.
And also based on the size, I think it is a good idea that they have a safety fence.
Yeah. Yeah, we discussed that in the last approval about having the detentions fenced.
These...to have it on its own separate parcel, the town would take that as part of the acceptance of the roadway. And anytime the town has to access it, they can just access it. There's no need to get permissions. There's no need to obtain easements. Knowing and considering the history of some of the projects in town, uh, I would wanna see that happen here, and then you have trouble trying to get easements from the potential homeowners. Because you're not guaranteed the easements when you go for a public way, right? Accept some public way. You can, you know, it's usually a friendly type of deal, you get easements, but you may have this person that may refuse to give you. And then you just link this down a different road. If it becomes a part...if it becomes a parcel, the town will own that parcel, and you just... you just go on there and do what you need to do. And you wouldn't be doing anything that other municipalities aren't doing as well, and it isn't the subdivision, your sub...your rights.
There was some continued discussion at the last meeting, Mr. Morse, from the original proposal, um, in regards to the larger lot towards the back.
Yes.
And I think we had some clarification in regards to the intent of that lot and the potential of that lot.
Lot three?
Yes.
The one at the end of the cul-de-sac.
And I think that the gist of, and I paraphrase, but the gist of what the question was is what is going to happen with the remainder of that lot or is there any potential with the remainder of that lot or...
So right now, it's proposed as one large lot. You know, there's kind of a choke point there at the corner of the property line with respect to a wetland, uh, and you're also choked off with the maximum dead-end roadway length, I believe, at the end of the cul-de-sac. So there's...there's limited potential for it to ever be extended in the future. There is some upland back there. We don't have access to it in any other fashion. I don't see that there's access from any other, um, property or another continuation of another subdivision, but it's all just proposed to be part of lot three currently.
And there was some pretty extensive discussion in regards to the entrance from county into the proposed project in regards to drainage along the...the westerly side of the road?
Yep.
So now we have...
You have a vegetated buffer along that hand...that side there. We were adding, um, trees and screening along that as well as I believe there's a swell and a trench system.
There is a swell and a trench.
Okay. To, uh, to get water around.
I see that...I see the trench. There is...I see the trench. It's a structure. I'm not sure that there's really a sway of all of it.
Is it just a...just a trench?
Yeah. Sheet 13. Uh, called out as a hundred-foot-long crushed stone, two-by-two, hundred-seat long.
So all of the drainage on the street itself stays within the street because the street has vertical granite curbing on each side. The sidewalk is pitched into the street. The street is then captured by catch basins and directed to the back to the detention basin. So the area from the back of the sidewalk to the lot line, which is currently just vegetated area, would remain as vegetated area, but we do have a two-foot wide by two-foot deep crushed stone, um, trench proposed, um, kind of at the low point between the road and the abutters' property. That trench then has a connection into a drain manhole with a drainage line which discharges to out back behind the detention basin as well.
Joe, can I ask a question?
Mr. Campbell.
On the same side that we're talking about with the trenches, how much of that, if that road would be accepted, how much of that trench would be in the roadway layout?
None of it. It's outside the layout.
So, and my other quick question is, you're talking about manhole and another form of structure going through Lot 1.
Yes.
So, previous conversation with the intent was that all of the stormwater management would be on a separate lot.
Yep.
I don't see how that can happen on that side. So I would like, do you have to say about that?
So that there, we'd either have to make that a separate drainage parcel, long skinny parcel for that, for that pipe and that discharge, or that would be an easement on Lot 1. I think your, your regulation is more in regards to the, you know, the detention basin piece. But I, I can look into that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. The only concern I have, I see this, I see the trench and I see that house. It'd be, it'd be nice, Greg, if there was, if that trench was in a swell that's like five feet wide, eight inches deep. Just, my concern becomes that if and when that trench gets clogged up, then it's just going to go right over and head towards that house. And at least if there's a swell as a backup to convert that water out towards the wetland. It's a little more protection for that because that house is so close.
That can certainly be done.
I know you just, I know it's just picking up the runoff off the hill there, but still, if maintenance has always seemed to be the issue with any of these. And unfortunately, the person that lives at night was at 96. You know, they, they would not have access to that trench to maintain it. So if, if, if the person on Lot 1 or the town doesn't maintain it, then it gets clogged up and they don't get water. So it'd be nice to have a swell there that has a backup to, to get that water away from that property.
Understood.
Any questions from the board? So we do have the public here. Mr. Morrison, as we always like to do with those that have shown to ask questions, I know that we don't want to do a, you know, a 50 round Q and A. It sounds like we are going to have a continuation, potential continuation till next week with some, with some new proposals. But opening up the floor to the visitors, before we acknowledge, please state your name and have any direct questions in regards to what was proposed this evening. We could do a small Q and A. Mr. Morrison's okay with that and we'll proceed from there, so.
I'll go through the chair.
Right, yeah. Mr. Johnson.
Keith Johnson, 96 County Road. That is my house that was just referenced. There are no broken pipes right now. There is no town maintenance near us. And I'm underwater, just for the record. I don't see how a project like this and trying to contain water is going to work in any event. Especially where that road is going to be elevated near my house, adding more water. And that's a direct hit to me. Also, for the record, I oppose this project.
And that's what the town planner was talking about, that a body line and with the addition of a swell would increase any protections.
I mean, the elevation of that access road. You're going to be four to seven feet above my.
It would still be contained. Whatever they do vertically has to be contained and diverted.
Another question, another Johnson, 96 County. What is a swell? Is that how you're pronouncing that?
Yes.
What is that? Can you explain that to me, please?
I'll let Mr. Morrison explain it though.
A swell is a, it's a conveyance channel that's grated into the ground. So it diverts water over the surface of the ground, but it's with respect to how the ground is grated off as opposed to being in like a pipe.
Okay.
Sure, can you pull up, go through the image of what swell would be?
Mr. De Frey has said that it would be five feet wide.
I'm recommending that. So what they're proposing here is there's the road and as you see, there's a stream comes out. So the road's, let's say, this high and it's sloping towards your property. And at the bottom of that slope, they're proposing a trench that's going to be forward stone. I'm asking them to create a swell above that trench as an extra precaution, as a backup. If that trench becomes silted up or covered with leaves, it's not going to be as effective. So if there's a swell that's pointing, goes along with, we're between that road and your property and heads towards the back, it's tilted out towards the back, it's extra protection to prevent runoff from that hill. Those, you know, not wide, but vertically, couple of feet. It gives extra protection from runoff heading towards your house.
Does that change the, does that have to, does that mean that the road itself has to shift one direction or another?
That would be once Mr. Morrison looks at that. I don't think that's the case, but I guess it's up to them to make that determination.
Mr. Morrison, what are your thoughts on that? Do you think you're going to have to shift the road somewhere?
No, from the road to your property line is a minimum of 35 feet. There's plenty of room to make a swell in that location.
That doesn't change the variance that you have to ask for to go into the wetlands buffer zone on the other side?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Chairman Campbell, my name is James Brennan from Senator Michael D. Brady's office. And I have a letter. I'm sure if I could, I'm pretty sure that the planning board has copies of that. And it may have, it may have been read, Mr. De Frey. Did you read that? If, if not, I was wondering if you could enter that into the record. I just wanted to say that our concern is for the abutters and the flood down, and the flood, flooding of the abutters property. And we're opposed to the, even within, even with the modifications, we're opposed to this project.
Will of the board, any opposition? Let me read and listen to the record. For the record, from the Office of Senator Michael D. Brady, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Senate, Chairman Mr. Campbell, Hanson Planning Board, 542 Liberty Street. Dear Chairman Campbell and members of the planning board, I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed housing development on County Road in Hanson, which may also impact residents of West Washington Street, Home Street, and Red Acre Farm. It has been brought to my attention by neighbors and activists that the development may cause for serious environmental and residential flooding concerns in the surrounding area. Areas of Hanson, like many towns in the region, suffer from serious chronic flooding because of their local.
Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we did read that. This is, this appears to be the same, you can, you can keep going, but it appears to be the same letter that I read dated February 15th.
This is the letter that you read from Senator Brady's office?
Yes.
Does anybody want to keep, keep reading?
You can keep going.
So it has been read into the record. So we'll have the minutes to reflect. Thank you very much for the seminar log. It has been read into the record. Any other, yes, sir.
My name is Bob Houston, okay, 669 West Washington Street.
Hi, Mr. Houston.
I'm having fun today, okay? You know, you are the planning board, okay? I've been a resident of town about 48 years now. In this area of the town, okay, is, you know, has been pointed out, okay, by others with geological, you know, expertise and stuff, okay, is interesting. But, you know, since I've lived here, Cushing Pond was built in, okay? We had the Pennsylvania project, okay, which added more water to the watershed. You know, all these projects go on, okay, and they keep adding more water to the watershed. You talk about Home Street, okay, and the water over there, okay, and it goes under the cul-de, okay, to, you know, the other, this west side of Home Street. You know, I'm that parcel, okay, where Brett Brook, okay, falls through. And, you know, when they did the sawmill project, okay, down there and they added the condos there, you know, they put in, okay, nice retention ponds, okay? And my neighbors, okay, you know, the Sylvester's, okay, have, you know, watched that being built up, okay, above their level of their land, their lawn, okay, and their gardens. And, you know, and it's increasingly adding more and more water to the watershed. All right, my home was built, okay, in 1870, okay, with gravity drains going up to the, to the roof. Those gravity drains now are under six inches of water, okay, on the normal. So my gravity drains, okay, are no longer gravity, okay? I've put in some pumps plugged up to gravity drains, okay? So we expend electricity, okay, to get rid of the excess water that comes out. Now, what I'm looking at, okay, I mean, this is the planning board, okay? And we're looking at the future plan for the town of Hanson, are we not? Okay, what happens here affects, okay, you know, basically, okay, down the line, okay, years down the line. And as I look at this, okay, with my well, okay, we have a well, okay, we have a septic system, the whole nine yards. Okay, and my question is, when is the planning board going to consider, okay, a septic system, okay, for the town, okay? A, basically, a, you know, sewage treatment plant as we speak. Okay, because as we keep adding water to this watershed, okay, it's all going to run downhill. Okay, it's, you know, these folks live next door. I live down the street. It all comes down. Okay, you know, I've seen the town say, you know, no salt zone, okay, in front of my house. But I see all the salt sand, okay, coming down the street, okay, filling up, okay, you know, the, the brook, okay, and all the catch bases and everything else. Right, and, you know, at some point, we got to look to the future and say, we got to put a stop to either the water coming in or put a plan, okay, that says we're going to do a sewage treatment plant to take care of this extra water coming through. All right, otherwise, okay, my property, okay, which is just north of the well fields, okay, with the town, okay, is going to turn into a swamp. Right, and, you know, as that gets flooded, it, okay, it affects the town wells. Okay, so then do we hire, you know, get water from the town of, or the city of Brockton, okay, and bring it back in as Main Street does? Okay, so there's so many things to be involved, okay, when we look at a project like this. All right, and it's like, you know, Independence Ave was on the same side of Home Street watershed. Okay, everything in that corner of the town, okay, is basically affected by it. Okay, when I moved in, Paul Meadows Brook, my kids used to go trout fishing there.
Well, Mr. De, you make great points. You absolutely make great points. Some of the points that you make are actually something that plagues not only town of Hanson, but all municipalities. And that is that some of the things that you point out aren't just the planning board, but you also spoke about many things that are Board of Health, Conservation, Select Board, Planning Board.
It all works together.
Right, right.
Okay, and that's what we're trying to do.
Do you have anything specific for what was proposed tonight for Mr. Hanson?
I'm against this project, okay, because, you know, the builder is looking at, getting, doing a project, okay? He's putting in streets with lots and he's not considering, okay, you know, the welfare of the people that are going to buy those lots, okay, and the neighbors around. Okay, so I'm definitely opposed to the project, okay? And, you know, that's what I'm saying, but it's, we're looking overall for the good of the town. Okay, that's why we're here. All right, so I just want to let you know, I'm opposed, okay?
Right, thank you. Any other comments? So it looks like we have a potential for a continuation. It's up to Mr. Morrison. I think Tom Planner.
I think there was one more question.
Yes, there was another question.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Another Johnson, 96 County. If Marion Scott mentioned a bond in one of her emails, would that be closer to when the project would be approved or denied as far as the determination of that?
That's correct. If there's.
I have a comment about that, so I'll, but I'll hold that until later.
If there's an approval, that's when that's discussed.
Right.
Type on time, so I can hold that question for later.
Any further questions from the board?
I just want to ask a quick question. We talked earlier about a swell. I hate to go in the wayback machine, but I just wanted to get some clarification. Looking at the top of graphical, is that the right way to say that?
I think it is.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that when we talk about the swell, I'm seeing, you know, different elevations in different spots. I'm a little concerned about the design of this. So you're going to have this looked at for those, for the fact that, I'm just afraid, I don't want to see this swell going and then have the people next door have to live with the consequences of it unless it's, I mean, it looks to me like it needs to be thoroughly looked at and well designed in order to keep it, it might actually, if it was done right, it might benefit them. It'd be a lot of problems as it is.
I think it will benefit them, absolutely. As you can see, at the front corner of their house, it's approximately elevation 84. Along that back lot line, you see an elevation 82, just to the left of the cursor, I think. So, you know, there is some elevation to pitch it down and around the back of that lot. So we'll certainly look at that in detail. Thank you.
That is a tiny corner. No, of course, there's something.
Mr. Howard.
Is the stormwater man's drains committee on your foot tonight?
On the agenda?
Is it on the agenda?
It is. Yes, sir, it is.
Well, I was told by Laura that it was. That's why I'm asking, is it on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other further questions for Mr. Morrison?
I just need Mr. Morrison to fill out this section of time.
Our next planning board date is potentially 3/27.
What, Mr. Chair, what I need to do now is execute that contract with Brigantes.
Yes.
And then they do have the information already.
Right.
But I'll make sure that they have, I gave them what they needed to give us a proposal. We'll give them everything. I don't know what their timeline is as of yet. So I don't know if Mr. Morrison would like to move this to the 27th or move to potentially the first meeting in April.
Which would be 4/10?
Yes.
Yes, if we could push this out to even the second meeting in April, that would be good. That would give us time to.
Second meeting in April?
Yep.
4/24. So to encapsulate tonight's presentation, Mr. Morrison signed a request to continue to 4/24, so April 24th. And in that timeframe, what we'll do is receive from Mr. Morrison some of the proposed changes in regards to what the project will look like by having the detention on its own lots. Thank you for all your input from the public. Thank you for the letters that were submitted. Obviously, they're written to the record. Everyone was able to hear them. All the input is going to definitely be considered. We also have council's opinion that we can proceed as a modification as opposed to a new definitive. Any other questions from the board?
And if I may, Mr. Chair, the peer reviewer will be looking at this for, to make sure that it conforms to solid regulations. That includes drainage, drainage subdivision control zone. So Conservation has their own folks who will be looking maybe at the whole project or maybe just at drainage. But this peer reviewer will be looking at all those, all those parts of the project.
So if, if the swell is put in with the peer reviewer looking back too, or are they going to look at it like this before that's?
They're going to see this, but they'll be notified that we've asked them, that the planning board asked that they include a swell.
Mr. Morrison, do you think they're going to have an opportunity to be able to review that before presenting to the planning board?
That's why I requested out to April 24th.
Wonderful, thank you.
So what, Mr. Chair, I mean, so what will happen is the, the peer reviewer will take a look at these plans and they'll create a items list as where they feel the project may not meet the requirements. And so they'll give us that list, which we then bring to the meeting and we pass along to Mr. Morrison. And then he'll address those issues. And at that time, he'll probably have a plan that will be revised or sometimes at least a sketch that will give enough information for the peer reviewer to see that swell.
Before we entertain a motion to continue, I'd like to offer also, please pass on to Senator Brady's office. Thanks for being involved down at our local level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please pass it on. With that, we'll entertain a motion to continue. The motion's been made by Mr. Ellis. Seconded by Mr. Benonato to continue to 4/24, April 24th. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none of those papers signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you everybody for your time.
Maybe if you'd like.
If I, if I could just ask the public, if you have the signed, the signing sheet that's on that table, if you just could, you can sign your name and if you'd like to leave any contact information, like a phone number or email, that'd be good. Thank you.
You got what?
Something in the back of my mouth. Something in the back of my mind.
I'm not talking to you. Okay. Right, yeah, but you can't.
I know. That's a, that's a... I know. If everybody's comfortable, we're going to continue on with our agenda for this evening. Moving on to the rest of our appointments. Approval not required, Plan Form 886 Tavern Way, MAP 100, Lot 29, Lot 29A, Lot 6A-H. Application, Kevin Perkins, planning prepared by Webby Engineering Associates, Incorporated. Tom Planner.
So, Mr. Chair, this, Kevin Perkins submitted a formal application proposing, and they can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, is three hammerhead lots on Tavern Way. The concern I had was regarding the access. The lots themselves run on a public way. The lots each have frontage. The only issue that I brought up or had concern with was in the zoning bylaws states that the central states, it says a lot, I'm trying to do a separation here, between the access points of two hammerhead lots should be equal to the frontage distance, which in this case would be 175 feet because this is a double A zone. If you're looking for plans, it's item number four in the packet. So what I did is I requested the town council to review the project and review the plan itself. And Mr. Talman did send an opinion, which I agree had in the package there. It's currently listed as confidential, but if you wish to raise the confidentiality, I would need it in, yeah?
Thank you, Tony. We have received a confidential legal memorandum. What is the will of the board in regards to reading the memorandum into the record?
May?
Yes.
I say it has bearing on our ultimate decision, so I would go for it.
How about a motion?
Motion to...
Put it in the record? Motion's been made by Mr. Benonato to place the confidential legal memorandum into the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cohen has seconded. Any discussion in regards to this motion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Let me know when you'll let me read that, Tony. Great, thank you, Tom Planner. Please bear with me, folks, this is quite a 19 letter. Confidential legal memorandum that has been motioned to enter into record to Tony DeFrastown Planner from J. Talman Town Council, dated March 10, 2023, regarding A and R for Hammerhead Lots 86 Tavern Way. Tony, you have asked for my opinion on this matter. Specifically, you have asked for my interpretation of Section 7B4D of the zoning bylaws, the bylaw, as it applies to a certain A and R plan that is currently before the board. In my opinion, for the reasons stated below, the most reasonable interpretation of the bylaw would warrant denial of the request to endorse the presently proposed A and R. Facts. Bullet one, an A and R plan has submitted on behalf of Kevin Perkins' property, for a property located at 86 Tavern Way, the property. The A and R plan depicts three so-called quote Hammerhead or quote pork chop lots. Two of those lots are separated by a 10-foot strip. Bullet two, Section 7B4 of the zoning bylaw allows such lots provided that they possess at least 40 feet of frontage. However, the bylaw further qualifies the frontage by noting that, quote, "No access of a portion of another Hammerhead lot shall be allowed to a but within the distance equal to the frontage requirement of the zoning district of the lots," end quote. The property is in residential double A zone, which requires 175 feet of frontage. Bullet three, it is, it is plain that the purpose of the bylaw, which was amended somewhat recently, is to ensure that Hammerhead lots are separated by 175 feet. Bullet four, however, the bylaw carries forward language that includes the term, quote, "a but," end quote. Based upon this language, the applicant has inserted that 10-foot strip between two Hammerhead lots and has argued that because they don't abut, the provisions of the bylaw do not apply. Discussion. An A and R endorsement is allowed under GL Chapter 4181P when a plan does not depict a subdivision. As is relevant here, an A and R endorsement must be considered if each lot has adequate frontage on a suitable street or way. In this regard, it is noted that provisions of General Law 4181L state, quote, "Such frontage shall be of at least such distance as is then required by zoning and other ordinance bylaw or bylaw, if any, or of said town, city for erection of a building on such lots," end quote. Based on this language, each Hammerhead lot must not only have 40 feet of frontage, but also comply with the requirement of this bylaw, of the bylaw. Under the rules of statutory or bylaw construction, a provision in a bylaw must be interpreted in accordance with its plain and unambiguous terms. Additionally, a bylaw must be read to give each component thereof meaning and all provisions of a bylaw are to be harmonized to the extent possible. It is notable too that where an ambiguity may exist in the language, in the language, a bylaw, it is the local board's interpretation that will be afforded difference. A deference. Based upon these rules of construction, it is my opinion that the bylaw cannot reasonably be read in the manner that the applicant suggests. Principally, although the word "a but" may not be the best word choice, the bylaw does not definitively state that the act of, quote, "abutting" relates to the other Hammerhead lot. Rather, in my opinion, the bylaw is best read to require that the other Hammerhead lot must abut land that is at least 175 feet from the original Hammerhead lot. To interpret it differently by allowing a sliver of land to separate the Hammerhead lots would render all of the language after the word "a but" meaningless. Accordingly, when harmonizing all of the bylaws provisions, it is my opinion that the most reasonable interpretation is to require at least a 175 feet of land between the frontage of Hammerhead lots. Furthermore, because this requirement is a component of the frontage reduction elements of a Hammerhead lot, it is my opinion that the rejection of the A and R plan could be based on this provision. You have also asked whether a prior contrary interpretation of a differently constituted planning board would operate to bind the current planning board. While a prior contrary interpretation by a planning, prior planning board is certainly relevant for the board to consider, it is not, it does not bind the current board. In all circumstances, a board cannot be bound to repeat a mistaken interpretation of a bylaw. While ultimately I defer to the planning board in its interpretation of the town's zoning bylaws, I hope this opinion is helpful as the board examines this matter furthers. And Chair Lee J. Talman, that is from Town Council. Thank you. Any applicant is here? Your representation?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Any comments?
Yes. Mr. Chair, for the board of preference, if I stand or sit?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, great, thank you. For the record, Attorney Barry Crimmins of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Kevin Perkins, as trustee of the 86 Tavern Way Trust. Couple of comments, and I guess I'll address the main issues that were raised in Attorney Talman's letter. The board is certainly familiar with the proposed division of the 86 Tavern Way property into the three lots shown in the plan. Lot 100-29 has the existing housing at that 86 Tavern Way. Lot 100-29A has the 2.189 acres. And then the other lot in the back, 101-6A, would have the approximately 20 acres of land. As stated, all of the lots have frontage on an existing public way, Tavern Way. The standard of review, the board is certainly familiar with this, so I don't mean to come across as preaching to the board, but rather just to reiterate the fact that the standard of review for an A and R plan is a very low standard. The standard of review is frontage, or let me qualify that, required frontage based on the zoning bylaw on an existing way. I would suggest to the board that these three lots have the required frontage on an existing way based on the reduction in frontage allowed for a so-called Hammerhead lot. The courts have been quite clear and consistent in their opinions. And I'm actually somewhat surprised that Attorney Talman didn't address this issue, that noncompliance with zoning is not a basis for denial of an A and R endorsement. As long as that noncompliance does not relate to frontage. So so long as the lots have the required frontage in the zone, which again, based on the reduction allowed for a Hammerhead lot, is 40 feet, as was mentioned, the board is, in my opinion, based on the case law, is supposed to endorse that plan. Because the only basis for denial is lack of frontage on an existing way. So Tavern Way certainly exists as a public way. The three lots proposed to be created based on this division of the 86 Tavern Way land all have the required frontage. So it begs the question, what happens in the event of lots shown on an A and R plan that may not comply with zoning? That's an issue that would need to be addressed with first, the building inspector, and/or then ultimately with the zoning board of appeals if in the opinion of the building inspector, the lots did not comply. So the issue here with the access drives for Lot 100-29 and 100-29A is the issue whether the strip of land dividing those two lots is sufficient to defeat these lots abutting each other. You know, statutory rules of construction, and Attorney Talman even acknowledges this, should be given their plain meaning. The word "a but" has a certain significance. I don't think you can say, well, somebody made a mistake or this isn't what that word was intended to mean. The word "a but" is unambiguous. It means to touch, okay? Those lots do not touch. And so therefore, the access to those two lots do not abut each other. And certainly, the access to the back lot down here in the lower right does not abut another hammerhead lot as well. And so the plain meaning of the language in the bylaw is that the lots cannot abut each other. But even if Attorney Talman's opinion were correct that somehow they still needed to have the, you know, to be 175 feet away from each other, that's a provision in the zoning bylaw. And once again, noncom, even if it were acknowledged or the board were of the opinion that that creates a noncompliance with the zoning bylaw, that is not the basis for denial of an A and R endorsement. An A and R, I'm sorry, an A and R endorsement contemplates any number of possible future actions on the part of the applicant. The applicant could in fact apply for a variance if one were deemed to be necessary. The applicant could look to acquire other land. And once again, the case law on this point is very consistent that noncompliance with a zoning provision does not form the basis for denial of an A and R endorsement. I would mention, only because I believe it was alluded to in Attorney Talman's letter. And by the way, I think, I think Kevin maybe just got a copy of the letter today. I've not previously seen the letter, so it's difficult to respond to the specific points, although I was taking notes as the chairman was reading his letter. So I think I got the gist of his letter. But there was a 2015 plan presented to this board. And I think there was at least one member of the current board that was on the board at that time, that had very much the same situation, in fact, almost the identical situation, two hammerhead lots on Pleasant Street divided by a 10-foot wide strip. And that plan received the endorsement of this board and was subsequently, subsequently recorded at the registry of deeds. So I would only reiterate, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that even if this board were to determine that that issue created a noncompliance situation with the zoning bylaw, which is where that provision is contained, that such a noncompliance situation, once again, and it's been throughout the case law on this point, does not form the basis for denial of an A and R endorsement by the planning board. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions that members may have.
Thank you, counsel, I appreciate it. In regards to the '95 case, I would like for everybody involved to continue, to not continue discussing that. In my opinion, because of that, is that, as you stated, in comparison, the plan, this plan in comparison with the plan in '95. The plan in '95 does not denote the other Hammerhead lot. It does denote a property line, but it does not denote the Hammerhead lot in full. Therefore, and I won't speak for the planning board at the time, I can only assume that the planning board at the time looked at a plan just like we are today, and it did not show another Hammerhead lot. So it only showed the proposed one. It showed a property line. So it is not comparable. We cannot continue that. So I would like to just get that on the record. We need to take that right off. And not, and not go back into the wayback machine of, you know, '95 or down a rabbit hole about what a previous board did and what this board is governed to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Just so I'm clear, because you mentioned 1995, so I want to make sure we're talking about the same...
86 or '95.
It was 2015.
Even so, I think the planner pulled up at the last, at the last meeting.
Okay. And obviously, as a member, so I wasn't at the previous meeting. I do believe that A and R plan does affect...
You're referencing Pleasant Street?
Yes.
So do we have, you can put that there?
And I can pass, I can pass this out to the members.
Yes, Mr. Ellis.
Irregardless, we have to go by today's precedent. It doesn't matter what happened yesterday or five years ago or 100 years ago. The bylaw states what it is today. And that's what Town Council said.
I don't disagree. I just want to make sure we were talking about the same plan. Because when you mentioned '95, I thought there might have been another plan that...
Same plan, it was original plan, and then there was an add to the Pleasant Street area. So I just want to make it clear that this board's not going to be bound by that previous decision.
Nor, nor am I suggesting that. I am only suggesting that under a similar set of circumstances, the board did endorse a similar A and R plan.
I'd just like to say, the reason why you get that letter right now is because it was brought, it was sent to me as a confidential legal memorandum. So I checked the town council, they explained that and we needed to do what we needed to do before we could hand it out.
Absolutely. And for the record, I want to be clear, I was not suggesting that the planner did anything improper, just to acknowledge the fact that, that in terms of responding to the letter, I haven't had an opportunity to see it before tonight.
Sure, by bringing it, by the board bringing it to the forefront, we didn't have to do any kind of executive session or anything like that. That was the procedural purpose behind all that, so. All right, any questions by the board? Tom Planner?
I did ask, as when you get to review the letter, like I said, if I, if Town Council had given it a different way, I would have been able to get it up to you sooner. You would have channeled.
Understood.
Would you like?
But I did ask him that same question regarding the previous plans that you've discussed, and that's what the opinion he gave at the end of his letter there about the ones not being bound. My concern was just the, the access, so kick it to the town council. He's giving his opinion, I give it up to the board as to what they choose to decide.
Would you like to take a recess from, from the appointment to discuss with the client and then, and then possibly return? We can certainly do that, give you time to review.
Sure, if you, if you don't mind.
We don't mind at all.
Have a very brief recess.
The board, okay? Okay, so you're okay with that?
Yeah. As long as we don't get bumped to the end of your agenda.
No, we'll fit you. We're out of, we're out of agenda order, so we can fit you right back in. We'll put that as a motion, please.
Motion to allow them sufficient time to discuss this, I don't know, how do you want to do it?
This letter?
Yeah.
Mr. Crimmins made a motion to allow for recess for the appointment. Second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Ellis. Any discussion in regards to that motion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll see you in the next few moments, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll be right back.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to another appointment in regards to our appointments on tonight's agenda, we have a discussion proposed by law by the Drainage and Storm Water Committee to place all detentions and retention drainage structures underground. I believe that Mr. Howard is here for that.
Yes. I don't know. I had a meeting with the selectmen, I forget the date. But honored to get this on to the town hall floor. We have to have a meeting and discuss anything we have to do with you before they can put it on the agenda for town meeting. And I don't know if you have any other questions for me. The only questions I have are something I'd like to say to you is, we have over 20 of these detention areas and retention areas in town. And that's about how many that aren't working. We have a highway department that consists of five people. They don't have the machines to maintain them. Plus the fact that to maintain them, they have to be on town property, which they aren't because they're on association's property. And you can't use tax money to maintain anything with tax money if it's not on town property. So this, this stormwater drainage committee that we have here now, what we're trying to do is on Christopher Lane in Hanson, there was two detention, there was one detention and one retention area, as you know, and program that I had before. And they've been in the ground working now for at least 12 years. And as you see on, saw in the pictures, we like to put that PowerPoint on at town meeting to show the public that the land that they're on can be used now, mowed, taken care of. You can build a parking lot on it or use it for recreation because they're underground. And that's what we like to incorporate and have the town vote on at town meeting. And basically, that's the point. I don't want to hold you up anymore in the meeting. I don't know if Dave's got anything to say. But he's got the information. It, I can't read it.
Well, the article reads, quote, "To see if the town will vote to require that all new construction-related retention and detention stormwater drainage areas be designed and built as underground detention or retention systems that include an inspection access port for monitoring and maintaining the systems." So the, the ask before the planning board is to endorse this favorable towards the select ward to place it on to town, town warrant.
So it will be placed on town meeting? If, well, if you vote for it, I mean, you have to.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Ellis, I have a question though. What happens if, what happens if a builder can't, can't do it?
Do what?
What, what happens if a builder can't put the new construction on the ground? What happens if?
Well, on this construction that's A and R, you can't change it. Okay, but any new, new construction, like stuff that's going on now, for other than having open face drainage, detention or retention areas, have them built underground. And therefore, they can be used for parking lots.
What if they, what if they can't build it underground though?
Well, that's the point. It's going to have to go through the board of health because to put in a retention or detention area, you should have approximately 11 feet from ground level to the water table. Okay?
So if they can't put it underground, you, basically, it would kill the project.
Yes, that's what it amounts to. I mean, I don't want to do that. But the problem is, I don't want to continue to have these detention areas and retention areas built for the simple reason they do nothing but breed mosquitoes. Now, these eggs that are laid in the water, you know how long they last? 10 years. As the water drains out, they lay on the ground, the water fills up, they produce mosquitoes again. We don't want that in the town of Hanson. We have two watersheds. We have the North River watershed. We have the Totten watershed. And our four wells that we have now working on the Totten watershed around between Franklin Street, Main Street, West Washington Street and Phillips Street, actually, that whole acreage is drinking water for the town of Hanson. We don't want to lose that. That's only been operating since 1980. And it's, it's very detrimental to the town that we conserve this water for our drinking water.
Mr. Mansfield, I'm sorry. I didn't see that you were here. Sorry. Did you, do you make a call? I didn't see that you were here. I'm sorry. I didn't recognize that you were here.
I'm here.
I think, is the, is the drainage management committee, is stormwater drainage management committee, are you amendable to taking the word require out and putting in something lots like favorable application or where applicable or, top player?
I think they should be installed no matter where it should be installed. If the, because Hanson right now has a high water table throughout the town. The good buildable land is done. It's gone. You know, Go and Drive, Liberty Street, parts of High Street and so forth. There is no good ethical land to build on anymore because the water table's so high. The, the problem is, if you start raising up some of these leaching fields above the ground, what it has to do now, instead of having to run gravity from the house to the leaching fields, you have to use electricity. I think that's wrong also. There's a lot, a lot of houses that were built after 1970 right now. I think you've got some pumps in them. I don't think they should have some pumps in them. My brother built his house in 1970. We found the water table. We filled it in with stone, so it was at least a foot above the water table. Coated foundation, the water just runs continuously all the time. It doesn't need a pump. It doesn't need electricity. This is what we want. We don't want to have to use electricity to do pumping of water out of the cells. I mean, these detention, the retention areas are the same thing.
Top, top player?
I, was that?
Yes, you can change it. I don't know. I talked with Tony about this. I don't know. It's the first time, Tony, I've actually, I've had a planning person to talk with about this because of the fact, I served the town of Hanson for 10 years as a selectman.
We know, Mr. Howard. We know.
I, I understand what Mr. Howard's trying to do. The only difference is, I would say that retention areas is that they retain the drainage, the stormwater, and they put it to the ground. And when they go, they'll become bathtub. A detention basin does just that. It detains the stormwater runoff and then releases it. A well-constructed detention basin, and I agree with Mr. Howard, maintenance always seems to be the problem. But a well-maintained detention basin will function to release that water and not have a buildup of, or a plumbing. So I would say that what other commissioners have done is they've actually eliminated the requirements for retention. In other words, they've eliminated retention altogether and they've said only detention. You know, this, the change he's asking for is something that would have to be put in the subdivision control law. And there's also the stormwater management guidelines where infiltration is part of, it's one of the many options you can have for treating stormwater. Some of it you can do with, in the structures, and put it in the ground as an infiltration system. But you have to have appropriate soils for that to go, for that to work. If you have a D soil, that's the worst soil. It's, you know, the system would be huge. It'd be very expensive. What I would, if you'd be interested in say compromising, is I came up with a different article, which would be, "To see if the town will vote to request an enhanced plan or during the next revision of the Hanson subdivision control law, consider and or require that all stormwater retention areas be placed in underground chambers if site conditions allow and conform with the stormwater guidelines in place at the time. Want to take any other action relative there too." And the explanation is, "A retention area is a form of stormwater management and treatment. Retention areas function by retaining stormwater and then allowing some stormwater to infiltrate into the existing soil beneath them. Over time, silt may accumulate in the bottom of the retention area, thus creating standing water, which may become a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Placing the retention areas underground will eliminate the potential of standing water and allow for passive recreation on the land above." I think retention areas, if you choose to, I'll still allow them as part of the way to treat stormwater in Hanson. And when I say a retention, putting, say, an infiltration system with a couple of contactors for the roof, that's a bit, that's a different type of design. But say something that's just going to treat all the stormwater runoff. For instance, Zero County Road, let's say it was a giant retention area, where that's all going to go in the ground. Something like that, over time, yeah, it will silt up, not maintain it, becomes a giant bathtub and a big breeding ground for mosquitoes. So that was an alternative if Mr. Howard was considerate, you know, maybe deal with the retention areas. You know, I think a well-designed, well-built and well-maintained detention area, and I agree with him, maintenance becomes the key. And that's what we have to really drive home, is the maintenance of these stormwater facilities. And I've said it many a time, and I agree with him, is that highway department is the one department that really needs to expand in town so that they have the ability to treat these and, and maintain them. So that's, that's my take on it. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ellis?
Tony, the thing that I worry about most is that if we require it and they can't build on that, on that piece of property or they decide that they want to do something different, then they can just go in with a 40B and just disregard every, all our rules and regulations that we have. You know, we don't want to get into a position where everything is going to be 40B in the town.
Right. I mean, I, when I say it's to, it's to, for the board to consider looking at it at the next time they revise the subdivision control law.
Well, the wording's got to be careful.
I'm not saying that you.
Mandatory.
That's mandatory. What I'm saying is that at the next, the town to vote at the, at the Hanson planning board during the next revision of the Hanson subdivision control law, consider and or require that also. So when you get to that point of reviewing the subdivision control law, you can make your decision.
Well, it's the and or require.
But he's putting the choices there. He's putting in there the consideration.
More language that states exactly that, I would go for. You know, and or, or either. Or some sort of wording where it's up to the soil conditions and everything else that are there.
Well, it's the town planner if they're supposed to go through the town. That's a discussion we would have post, post article.
Right. I know he's got it there, but sometimes, like the attorneys, you get two attorneys come in and they interpret it two different ways. So the wording is critical.
Mr. Cameron?
I just wanted to add, we have two conservation commissions that are in the lead, right? So I haven't been on the conservation commission in a long time, but it's likely that most of these retention areas would be within that jurisdiction. A good percentage of them, I would think, right? And as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that a conservation commission would be able to approve some of these retention areas because of the stormwater management regulation. So, you know, I feel like by creating this bylaw, we create nothing but problems with people who want to build are going to sue us because, you know, they have the right to build, right? We all know that, right? So we can't create bylaws that are going to make it even more difficult for them to build. You know, I got to be honest with you. They're just going to say, I don't have to comply with that because if you look at the stormwater management regulations that are in the works for 2024, right? It's going to negate all of this. We won't be able to do retention ponds anymore.
I would suggest this doesn't relate to conservation unless it's a wetland area.
Yeah, right, within jurisdiction.
Then, but only then, of all conservation. So we're not speaking for conservation purposes.
But, but, but a retention can, can, can become, can become.
The way Tony's worded this is, sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
If I could speak for our question. There is a document from EPA about it, and I have, I have a reference here. I'm not going to read it, but. It can be referenced. And our purpose was to get this before the people of the town so that they understand that there are options besides what we have now and to let the voters decide whether they think it makes sense or not. And with that in mind, our purpose would be to get this information out to the voters so they can access it if they want. It's from the EPA, and they're not recommending this as the only way to go. They're just saying this pros and cons. It's, it's an unbiased opinion from them. So in my opinion, the voters of the town have a right to take a look at what's available and to vote for it. And I would propose that we have, find some wording that's compatible with what we're looking for here. So the voters can make their decision on that. And we're not looking to try to force people to do things that can't be done or anything like that. If it comes to conservation-related issues, those are different issues altogether and they fall under wetlands protection. So that's a different issue.
Right, right.
In the way, Mr. Business Chef, I mean, the way I have the article written is that the voters would request that this planning board during your next revision of your subdivision control law consider it, not telling you to require it. So that's why I say consider and or require. So you can just consider it or? I mean, but we can, we can work on that if you, if you have, you know.
Yeah, we've got time. So our next meeting is 327.
Yes.
So we've got some time, right? So between now and 327, could, could, could we, the two departments, can we bang heads to come up with the best iteration moving forward that isn't as, uh, potential litigation for requiring, you know? Would that be the, would that be the best?
That makes perfect sense to me, that we do that. And then, and then once that conversation happens in the future, we know the will of the people.
Perfect.
And so that could be way in consideration. That's really all I have.
And I think it should just be retention areas.
Retention, right.
Yeah, we agree with that as well.
Mr. Ellis?
Trying to understand this. We don't need the town meeting to do this. We can do it ourselves.
Well, this would direct the town, this would direct the planning board to do that at the next, at the, at the subdivision control law review. They would direct that to consider.
Yeah, put it on, yeah, we thought of it, the people for the state recognizes it.
So if it gets, or the town is just asking you that at your next revision of your plan, of your subdivision control, that you take a look at this and consider.
Why can't we just do it anyway?
You can't.
You can't.
You can't. We're looking to get the will of the people into the equation.
Great.
Well, it's easy to say that, but.
Yeah, so, okay, so what we'll do is, what we'll do is have both departments, you know, bang heads in regards to language from both sides. It's going to be applicable to and agreeable with, with everybody. And if, if, if that wording is good, then it looks like what we'll be taking out by town planner is detention and just leave it as retention.
Yeah, that's straight between detention.
And then, and then we can put, we can put that to a vote on the 27?
Okay, so I'll get together with Tony sometime in the next week.
Please, yeah, wonderful.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Sure, and, and, and for any of the board members, any input that you have, please forward that on to the top player. Great, thank you. And that still, that still. Mr. Mansfield, that still keeps us in timeframe for town meeting.
That's correct.
I believe that this left board has put it on as a placeholder. Want to wait till you come back? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Howard. So we'll have that as a continue bullet on to the 327 agenda. Entertainer motion to continue that to 327? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion in regards to that? Mr. Cameron made it. Mr. Cohen seconded it. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? motion carries 401. Mr. Ellis is in the bathroom.
I may go on with time. Mr. Ellis, up to room at 8750.
Thank you. Just a few minutes time. Go ahead for Mr. Ellis coming. Do we, do we have a set date for our next planning review? Subdivision control?
No, we haven't put that.
We have to, we have to put that into the master plan? Like it's going to be in the bottom of the master plan?
I know that we're CPC, the ones that we're working with. I haven't yet an update from them because I have to prepare court papers. State we got in the grant. It's on the list of what we were, we were going to try and get to this year. We'll just stop looking at the subdivision control law. Mr. Ellis, Mr. Ellis, send to room at 8195.
Thank you. Is that Tony? We'd like to return back, the board would like to return back to the approval of not required plan form A in six tavernway. Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I appreciate the opportunity to have an opportunity, appreciate the opportunity to, to read Attorney Talaman's memo to the board. And I think, and do all the members have a copy of it?
Yes.
Because I think the whole issue really comes down to the paragraph on the first page, the first paragraph under the heading Discussion. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, it says, "An A&R endorsement is allowed under Chapter 41, Section 81P when a plan does not depict a subdivision. As, as is relevant here, an A&R endorsement must be considered if each lot has adequate frontage on a suitable street or way. In this regard, it is notable that the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81L state that, quote, 'Such frontage shall be of at least such distance as is then required by zoning or other ordinance or bylaw, if any, offset city or town, for erection of a building on such lot,' end quote." Based on this language, each hammerhead lot may, must not only have 40 feet of frontage, but also comply with the requirements of the bylaw. It's, it's only that last sentence, basically, that I disagree with Attorney Talaman's opinion. And I don't even think we need to, you know, take off the table. We don't need to get into any former endorsements that the planning board made. We don't even have to get into the question of whether or not that lot, the lots as proposed, comply with that provision of the zoning bylaw for, for a simple reason, once again, that the standard of review for an A&R endorsement is, do the lots proposed each have the required frontage on an existing way? If not, the plan is subject to the subdivision control law. If they do, then, then the board is entitled to endorse the plan as, as an A&R plan approval not required on the subdivision control law. Any, I just have to emphasize, any zoning issue or any issue of noncompliance with any provision of the zoning bylaw is a matter, again, first for interpretation of the building inspector, and depending on his interpretation, his opinion may ultimately need to be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Those are zoning issues that come under the jurisdiction of, once again, at first blush, the building inspector, secondly, if, if further appeal were necessary, with the zoning board of appeals. This is no different than if there were an issue with whether the lots had the necessary width, whether they had the necessary depth, or any other provision of the zoning bylaw. Those issues, once again, are for interpretation of the, of the building inspector and/or the zoning board of appeals. What is left really for this board to decide is, do these lots have the required minimum lot frontage of, of 40 feet on an existing way? And factually, I would suggest that there really can't be any other interpretation of that point than that they do. Any issue of zoning compliance, once again, is an issue to be addressed to the building inspector or the zoning board of appeals. If this board were to endorse this plan, that does not constitute compliance with zoning. We still will have to address those issues with, first, the building inspector and/or possibly the zoning board of appeals. So the issue will need to be addressed. I think the question is, which board really has authority to address those issues? Where should those questions rightfully be addressed? And once again, I would suggest it's not with this board, but rather the building inspector and/or the zoning board of appeals. If this board were to deny the endorsement, as you know, what you're, what you're stating in effect is that it constitutes a subdivision, and it would be necessary to go under the subdivision control law. This, this type of a plan, of course, would be the type that typically, if it had to go under subdivision control law, would then have a series of waivers requested for all the technical requirements under the law. But the issues, even to the extent, if, if Attorney Talaman is correct, question that there's a potential noncompliance with the provision of the zoning bylaw, that is to be addressed by the building inspector and/or the zoning board of appeals and not this board. And again, that's why I say I'm kind of surprised that Attorney Talaman didn't mention that. When I, when I heard that there was an opinion presented to the board, I said to my client, I think what he's going to say is, if I may be so bold, to suggest that it complies with the requirements for an A&R endorsement. And if, and if this board feels that there are zoning compliance issues, those will need to be addressed accordingly. So I would respectfully suggest to this board that this plan is in fact entitled to the endorsement by the board because it meets the minimum requirements for a minimum lot frontage of 40 feet on an existing public way. No lots to be created, do not have such frontage on an existing way, we're not creating any new ways, and therefore, my, my client is entitled to, to the endorsement of this plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board, for your consideration.
Mr. Ellis.
Tony, this is in a subdivision.
I believe it is.
Yes.
Is it not under subdivision control?
Yes. My, my question wasn't frontage. It has the frontage. And it's on one of three types of ways. It has the frontage. My question and concern was access, the actual, the actual access. And the zoning requires, in my interpretation, that access between two hammerhead lots be equal to the frontage of the zone that it's in. In this case, 175 feet. That's what I was seeking clarity. I don't disagree that it fronts on one of three types of ways. It's a public way, yep. Has, they have 40 feet of frontage, yep. Access. And that's what I was looking for clarity from Attorney Tal. Was the access. That was my concern. The other two points, agree with you 100%. And they, they meet, they meet the frontage, and they follow on the three types of ways. And access was the issue. And the access under the bylaw, in my interpretation, was that they, they have to be separated by 175 feet in this case because it's an AA zone.
Right.
Again, it's just, it's up to the board as what they, what they wish to do.
I believe that Mr. Ellis might have been bringing up the point about being already an existing subdivision. Are there any other hammerhead lots that are in the subdivision?
I don't know. I don't have that concern.
That's an interesting fact because you can only have, I believe it's one in a subdivision.
Right, but then, this is an existing subdivision, you know?
But that's what I'm asking. It's still a subdivision. A turtle's a turtle.
Well, on that, if I may, for you, Mr. Chairman. Once, once the subdivision is created, you no longer, you, you now are dealing with the lots. So now this lot is proposing to be further divided. There's no restriction on, on dividing lots in an approved subdivision if those lots to be divided comply.
Comply, right.
So, so the fact that, you know, whether it's an existing subdivision really doesn't, doesn't apply. I would just, you know, maybe if I may, and I hate, I'm hoping I'm not being a dead horse here, but in response to the town planner's comments, I understand what the question was and what the basis of the question is. My only issue is zoning issues are not a basis for denial of an A&R endorsement. And once again, you know, the case law is pretty clear, not pretty clear. The case law is very clear and consistent on that point. For all, for all the reasons I stated previously, that an applicant could be doing an A&R endorsement as a preliminary matter to addressing the zoning or any other number of things. That's why zoning is not a basis for denial because it's not up to this board to say it doesn't comply with zoning, therefore, we're going to withhold the A&R endorsement.
Mr. Ellis.
But wouldn't that be, under the, any subdivision that's built can only have, I'm not sure, I'll say one, one retreat lot per subdivision. And here we have here, three in that, in a subdivision that's been built, yes, but it was under that umbrella.
So that'd be a further on of two violations of zoning.
I think that would be open to interpretation, in all honesty.
Be what?
I think it would be open to interpretation, in all honesty. My, again, my concern is, is, and I'm not trying to be the dead horse. It's three things. Does it front on one of three types of ways? Yes. Does it have the frontage? Yes. Does it have access? The access was the question. And you know as well as I do, it has to have all of those to get A&R endorsement. So, yes, we can, so that was the, that was the only, that was the issue that I saw. And the access is defined in that section of the hammerhead lots stating that they have to be X amount of feet apart.
It's all part of the frontage calculation, correct?
Well, it's, it's, it's just the access. Yeah, it's, in this case, it, the way I read the access is that it has to be 175 feet apart between two lots. And I know a buts becomes a word, and even Jay Talman said a buts may not have been the best word, but we have to read everything after it.
Right.
And that's how I read everything after it. And, you know, I'm not trying to do your job. I just, that's my question. That's why we, I take that up to him, you know?
Nor am I trying to do yours, and that's why I said, in my opinion, we don't even have to debate that word, a buts. Although certainly it's central to, to the issue here. Because even if it were determined that it doesn't comply, my opinion is that that's a noncompliance, if it were to be one, with a zoning provision.
And, and I, I don't disagree with what you're saying that the planning board can endorse this plan if they choose to do so. And that, yes, there's already a note on there that says that, you know, by endorsing it doesn't mean that it complies with zoning and that it could go to the building inspector who could then deny it because he may interpret the bylaw the same way I do. Which in that case, your client would probably appeal it, and go to the EPA. They do their thing and either go for it or against it, and maybe winds up in litigation. So the board does have that ability to, to sort of, we'll say, kick the can down the road with it.
And again, that's why I think, you know, the legislature was purposeful in drafting the language of the statute the way they did in saying that really the only issue for a board is, is frontage on an existing way. The, the other issues, I said, without, you know, we, we will have to address those issues. It's just a question of where and when is it appropriate for us to address those issues? I would suggest the board, as I've said, that that's for the building inspector and/or the zoning board of appeals. Because your endorsement doesn't change anything. We can't go forward with any construction without addressing those issues. So I don't see that there's a downside. But again, that, you know, I don't want to get off on a change, and that's not really the issue. The issue is, does it meet the requirement of required frontage on an existing way, notwithstanding any potential zoning noncompliance, which is a question to be addressed by other, other boards?
But I think access still becomes a question for this board, no?
Yeah.
Mr. Cameron.
I gotta be honest with you, you know, you keep saying, why don't we just kick the can down the road? Right? That doesn't seem like, you know, we're here to represent the people of the town and all that stuff. You know all that stuff, right? So what you're really saying to us is, why don't you just kick the can down-
That wasn't my expression, just for, for the record.
Somebody else said it.
That wasn't my expression, so I'm, I'm not going to take ownership of that. What, what I'm suggesting is, this plan meets the requirements for an A&R endorsement. I was trying to address the issue that was raised, what about this other issue? This plan, in my opinion, meets the requirements under the statute for endorsement by this board. And again, the case law, it is, is clear on that issue.
Any other questions or comments from the board? What's the will of the board?
I will say this, I will, I will say this, the board has to make a determination tonight.
Yeah, we're on, we're on 3/20 of 20.
So there has to be some kind of determination tonight so that this can be filed.
We still have the access question.
That's always been my question.
Yeah.
And Jay Talaman has given his opinion to the board, whether you want to go with his opinion or you don't.
Do we prove it as is? Do we let they go forward with the building inspector and zoning board of appeals?
I can be honest with you, Paul, this is what bothers me about this. It's like, you know, you're saying the same thing I was just saying a few minutes ago.
I agree with you.
Do we want to kick that curve down?
Exactly, yeah. We have to make that decision.
If that's, if we're just going to kick the can down the road, why would we bother the committee and do this? I just have to ask that question. So, you know, I, I'm not opposed to the project. It doesn't look bad at all. But that 10-foot strip just looks horrible, sliding down the middle down there. And I, I just don't see any way around, around it myself. So if nobody else wants to make the motion, I'd like to make the motion that we deny this based on Jay Talman's advice.
Is a motion on the floor, Mr. Cameron, for denial of the project based on town council's advice? Is there a second?
What is this actual advice?
It's in the letter.
Yeah.
It's referenced in the letter.
Referenced in the letter, and the reference in the letter says what?
Well, we have, we have a motion on the floor, so is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made in second in regards to denial of the project based on town council's letter. Is there any discussion? Is there a discussion? Any question answered?
Well, it's, it's, it's what the, we have to really go by what town council says because if we do the wrong thing and change from the town council, then we have to eat it.
Exactly.
So the safe side of it is, is to go with town council. So I'll go along with it, town council.
Mr. Ellis' clarification regards to town council in the discussion to the motion has been answered. Any other discussion in regards to the motion? Saying none, all those are fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that vote, pleasure. Pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get the decision tomorrow with the town board.
Take, take your time.
There's one other thing that we can, we can write that on the plan. Town council said-
Yeah, it's already in there.
Well, yeah, it is in a way, but we, well, we approved it. Never mind.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
So moving on in regards to board business. Please.
Yeah, there's a sign that you'd like to sign.
So tonight's board business, we have the regular subcommittee updates. Imagine if we take that out of, out of, out of order as well as with the minutes and put that on the end. That way, we can have town planners, Stonebridge Commons update and discussion from EP Observation Report for Stonewall States. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night, council. There's still two. It's been a while since you had to sign it here, fans, Hanson, right? How are you?
I'm very well. How are you?
Doing okay.
Good.
How's things going with the Platinum?
Partners.
Thank you.
Very good.
It is, yeah?
Yeah.
Watching some YouTube videos recently.
Until today.
Yeah.
I was watching some of your videos in regards to the MTA communities. So thanks for putting those out there.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're talking to the towns now. And we know that some of the towns are receiving technical assistance. But we're working with the towns for when that's through, and we may need like a requalification. Because what we're finding working with the towns is, a lot of the towns, like, the definitions are behind, behind times, and things are happening out there.
Yeah, it's fast and furious.
When someone comes in, you go through the book, you folks looking for it, and you go, we don't have it. You know, how do you make a decision? So that kind of stuff.
Right.
So we're looking to do that.
Yeah, look forward to hearing from them.
As our next step, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'd love to work with you.
Yeah, definitely reach out to Tony.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Tony.
Town Planner, regards to Stonebridge comments, Bonner Lee's, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue that to the next meeting. I'm still looking for some as votes that have been requested by members of the board.
I stated continue. Discussion on environmental partners' observation report for Stonewall States.
Again, that's another one, you know, we could push that to the 27th for the discussion.
Wonderful. So moving back to subcommittee updates. Wonderful. So, moving back to subcommittee updates. Open Space hasn't met yet, spoke with Mr. Clements at the recent strategic planning meeting. Uh, we gotta still reach out to Mr. Lindquist. I think we're actually gonna have the town clerk reach out to Mr. Lindquist and find out whether or not he is serving or not serving. Uh, so that's gonna be my most recent, and then OCPC from Open Space. And then OCPC has, um, upcoming meeting on Wednesday, I think. Are you attending that, Tony? For, it's 10:00 AM or something like that? I think it's 10:00 AM. Did you see the notice, what, a 10:00 AM meeting? I'll attend.
I think the 10:00 AM one might be the, uh.
OCPC Finance Committee, so that's the next thing, is the Finance Committee from OCPC, but.
Um, I will not be able to attend that 29th meeting, Mr. Chair, if you wish to.
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Um, I will be out of action.
You got it. Mr. Ellis.
Uh, the Park Committee is advancing. And it required, requested the engineer to stake out the areas, so the play areas, the tenant, the basketball area, the parking areas and things like that in there, so they can get a, some of the members can get a better look at where everything is going.
Nice.
Have you heard anything to when he would be doing that?
No, I reached out to Steve Wright at Land Planning and expressed to him that to move forward with the staking and to let me know when he does, when he is going out there to do it. And he said he would get in touch with me.
Okay.
So, I just, I have not heard from him at this point.
Mr. Cohen.
Wow, strange.
Mr. Cohen.
Uh, we did have a meeting this past week. We, we do have a live guide on the Hanson website to starting a business in Hanson with a so-called punch list of, uh, you know, uh, questions that people may have. We're working towards reaching out to area businesses to get some feedback and see how we can help them out in promoting, uh, area businesses so that we can, um, uh, help them to grow in Hanson.
Thank you. Mr. Kim.
All right, well, I'll be real quick. The CPC is grappling with issues with, um, you know, housing at this point. Probably because I keep bringing it up. But anyway, um, you know, one of the things that we discussed is, you know, we would like to start some kind of, um, you know, uh, community housing committee because, you know, it's very difficult, like, you know, I know Tony's been talking to us about the, um, the land that's could be available and developing that from an affordable standpoint. But, um, one of the things that was brought up in our meeting is the fact that Tony has no administrative assistant and his place is full. So, it's difficult to try to ask him to help the CPC with the planning issues that are willing to come up as a result of this community, um, housing ideas. So, I would only say that, um, there should be somebody sitting there at this point. And I think we need to do something about that.
Yeah, do we know that?
He said, you know.
Yeah. Mr. Benonato.
So, well, you see, I saw part of the Drainage Committee. Um, I have been in communication with them, so we can have the next meeting not at noon time during the work week. That's about as far as we're going.
Wonderful. Moving on to the agenda, administration, Town Planner update.
Uh, if you'd like to, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to vote on the minutes from 27th of February.
We can go back to the original part of the agenda from the minutes. So, uh, there is a motion on the floor by Mr. Kim for approval of February 27th, 2023 Public Carrying Minutes. Second. Motion's been made in second, if proper, by Mr. Benonato. Is any discussion regards to the minutes from 2:27? Saying none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
As Town Planner update, uh, the Sojourn people, uh, they did take a look at the town properties, like the Elton Thomas School on Phil Street. And they will be attending virtually on the 27th of March, wanting to give an update to the planning board.
Perfect.
The administrative assistant, we have interviews up and coming this Thursday. We have, I think, four or five. Unfortunately, there was one resume that did come in that as soon as they came in, I went down, asked the executive assistant, it was like, get this person in. Because it would have been, they had, they took, this person ticked off all the boxes. Unfortunately, they declined unless they were contacted. They questioned the hours, and so the executive assistant just explained the hours and something triggered that they just were not interested, which is unfortunate.
Did they think it was full-time, is it though?
I don't know if they, I, I didn't, I didn't speak to the person, so I, I don't know if they thought it was full-time or just the, maybe the meetings at night, I, I don't know what triggered it. But unfortunately, they backed out, which, which it would have been, it really, I, they had. Unless, unless they really had a bad interview on paper, they would have been a really good fit. So, uh, but we have other folks that we're gonna interview this, this Thursday.
Great.
Private way signage was appropriated back in October through the planning board. The issue, uh, Highway was having was basically couldn't access the money. So, I reached out to the town accountant. And so, the easiest solution is, um, the Highway Department will do what they need to do to get the signs. They will forward the invoices to planning. And we will alternate in the warrants to pay for those invoices.
Okay.
So, um, so that's our group's motion.
Yeah, it's quick and easy.
Now, that being said, um, Highway Department, uh, would like the planning board to put up an article for, to retain the services of a land surveyor to survey the Highway Department site, the existing site, to establish the property lines. Which would then lead to the next step of looking at, uh, that plan that I had put out regarding, you know, new buildings on that same site. So, there were, they, they did reach out to a, a firm, uh, that came up with a price of approximately.
So, you're just saying that the planning board has to have a date for this going?
No, so, they reached out to Weston and Sampson for survey services. And they came back with a, uh, cost of $29,900 to establish the property lines and for that piece of property on Indian Head, uh, on Indian Head Street. 797 Indian Head Street.
I'm in the wrong head.
So, yeah, even when I saw that, I'm like, ooh, maybe I need to go back to the private side. But, uh, so, the, the issue is, Highway has a full plate that they're presenting at the town meeting.
Yeah, they do.
And so, they were hoping that maybe the planning board might be willing to write up this article to try and get these funds, and then that way it can move to the next step of having a study done looking at, what's the established property lines of, what can they do on that site based on that, um, plan that I had put forward?
Yeah.
So, if the, if the.
Where would the proposal come from, that the funds come out of?
Can I put my two cents in?
Absolutely, second.
Um, I think one of the things that's missing from this is I know, um, when I was on conservation, we had issues with the town forest and, you know, who owned what and everything else. And there is a plan for that site, right? And, uh, so I wonder if it's just a matter of resurrecting that, um, from a dustbin and looking at it from that perspective, it may be less expensive rather than going and reestablishing all the lot lines. I believe that's already been done.
Okay, I, I have not, I have not been able to find anything to this point?
Uh, Phil would probably be the first to find.
I'll reach out to, I can reach out to, to him.
Cause he's bragged and touted those plans for years, so.
Is it applicable?
Probably a copy in his living room.
Would this project be applicable to CPC?
Yeah, no, because of the Highway Department factor in it, probably not. You know, the only thing that CPC could probably do, right, is lay out the lot lines for the town forest itself.
Say it again, lay out the lot lines.
For the town forest.
With the aspect of parks and fields being in there?
I think so. So, actually, Phil, without you spending money, I would be, so that as well.
That's honey, but it's bad.
Just for the record, uh, Mr. Benonato left the room at 8:49 PM.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying, just trying to see where else, what, cause it, that's gonna be the number one issue, it's funding source.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if, uh, Phil or somebody from, you know, the clerk's office or whoever that, that stuff would be, probably at the Registry of Deeds, right? Cause there's plans, I know, there's, there has to be, because, um, there was, well, maybe not at the Registry of Deeds, but I know that there's, uh, town, um, meeting warrant articles related to all of those sites.
I, I researched at the registry, there's no plan on file. And I even saw the assessors to see if maybe they had something in their files, and they do not.
Well, talk to Phil then, because maybe he's just been making it up all these years.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, maybe, maybe a plan, maybe a plan was done, uh, but not recorded and it's maybe somewhere in-house. I, I even looked in the, um, the files across from my office and I could not find anything regarding that site as far as a perimeter plan, so.
Even the other thing is that there's a search system from the Indian Head School that's on that property.
Well, it's on the town forest side.
Right, of course, it's part of that property.
So, but, you know.
Like case landing?
Just kicking the tires, I was always under the understanding that, you know, I, I remember when the CPC was trying to do the field, we were trying to establish who owned what, and, um, still quite a few people who seemed to know who owned what. You know, the Highway Department, it claims rights to the parking lot in the area next to the town forest where they keep putting piles of dirt up.
Right.
So, there must be some plan or something that shows them that that's true.
Right.
So, I gotta be honest with you, I think there's some kind of a, it, it could be a, you know, um, you know, an old, old plan, but there's something out there.
So, lack of a plan, do, are we at a time crunch to get this on for this town meeting?
He would like to get it on, uh, for this town meeting. I did request a placeholder through the town administrator's office.
But he needs a funding source, otherwise he can't, it's a waste of time. And they're, they're gonna turn it down because it doesn't have the funding source.
Well, yeah, I think his concern was obviously he has such a full plate that he figured that maybe the planning board might have a better opportunity to get the funds.
Yeah, Highway Department, Highway Department has like six articles, seven articles that are proposed.
So, he's, uh, so he's just asking if you would entertain an article?
I don't see any problem with that. You guys see any problem? You have any problem with that? It's just an article.
Again, it's, it's, it's one requesting a dollar amount.
Right, it is, so that would be about two-thirds.
The first thing they're gonna ask you with the dollar amount is what's the funding source?
Right.
And you don't have that, so, um, I, I think, whatever you have on.
But at least, at least, one of the things that, if, if you don't want to see me get up at town meeting, I continue to talk and try to remind everybody that if we don't start investing in ourselves. And so, at least, even if the article's turned down, it's written in a warrant, gets the word out there, gets people thinking.
Would you like to support an article if I was to speak with, let's say, the town accountant? And was the funding, uh, option available?
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but, but that's 29,000, that's, you see anything coming in less than that?
Yeah, but couldn't, couldn't, I, I know everyone keeps talking about this, but, uh, isn't there some ability through opera, because we're trying to improve our roadways? So, I don't know that much, probably already spent. But I'm just saying, you know, like, I, I just think it would go better if there was some kind of a, like, you know, I don't know, in my experience, it's always, I'm with them.
I would even consider reaching out to Senator Brady or.
How about this?
Or Representative Cutler, or.
We take, you take, you take the next two weeks and we'll see if maybe we can find, uh, what I had to get, find funding somehow. And then on the 27th, you make a determination as to say.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, okay, we'll, we'll write up an article and support.
Will the town give the town planner overtime?
Or if you can't find it, or if you can't find any money for it, then.
I like the idea.
Or, or even a plan, cause I will, I'll reach out to Mr. Clements to see if there's a plan.
Right, well, I like the idea that we're trying to move forward on this whole thing. I'm just concerned that why would it be the planning board? And I know that where we once, it was kind of about your idea, right, which we're the planning board. So, we should somehow endorse it.
Yeah, I think that might be, that that could be maybe a slow process too.
Yeah, I think it might be worthy of dueling as a little, so.
Well, it'd be the planning board putting it forward to the select board to support, right? Planning board, select board, placement.
Right, so, so in essence, like you did with the private way signs.
Yeah.
It's the same thing. And then I guess, you know, they have any invoices, the planning board would be the ones to invoice them.
Sounds good.
So, I'll, I'll look, I'll speak to Mr. Clements to see if there's any plans that he can think of and if he knows where they might be. Uh, and I'll look, try and look, work, and if anyone else, uh, thinks about any funding.
Which, which Clements?
Phil.
Phil, I'd go to, uh, I would say Brian, because he was here all the time. He knows where all those plans are downstairs.
Oh, I've already, I've already.
No, I mean, Phil, what, what I'm saying is Phil, uh, had.
He had a project.
Some knowledge, basically because of the town forest. And if you remember, when they did the ballpark, and not the ballpark, whatever that thing is in the back there, uh, they needed to take some space from the town forest.
Right.
So, uh, somebody seemed to know where all those lines were. And I know in CPC, when they wanted to put up the fence, people seemed to be pretty clear as to where the demarcation between Oteary Field and the Highway Department was. So, I, I guess, unless these people are making these things up, I'm gonna assume there's some kind of a drawing somewhere, you know?
That word will get you all the time.
Yeah, assume, assume.
Well, that sounds like a good idea, Tony, to, to put that on for the 3/27 with some more definitive information. Could be funding source coming in, local government, uh, or state government grants. Yeah, it could be anybody. Somebody who wants to pay for their business sign on the outfield.
It can't be CPC.
No CPC.
That's all right. But I will bring it up to them if you'd like.
Anything else?
I'll, I'll look, I'll look, I'll look, uh, I'll, I'll see if I can find, to this point, I haven't found any plans, but I will look again. And I even, I've even been downstairs to the basement, like, base, base, basement. And, uh.
Yeah, but you haven't been to Still's basement.
Yeah, it's, and, uh, we'll bring it back around. And that's all I have.
Wonderful. Anybody else have anything, any board members have anything for the good of the order? Let's please vote on the next planning board meeting, uh, scheduled for Monday, March 27th. Is there a motion?
Motion, assess.
Motion's been made to have the meeting on March 27th. Motion's been made by Mr. Ellis, second, probably second by Mr. Kim to hold a planning board meeting, Monday, March 27th, 2023, at same bad time, 6:30 here in the planning, in the town, uh, select board room. Any discussion regards to the motion? Saying none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. That's a five-zero motion. Uh, and a 10 motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Mr. Kim. Second by Mr. Benonato. Any discussion regards to adjournments? Saying none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Uh, this is. 8:57.